Morning, everybody.
Good morning, Brian.
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning. How are we doing, Brian?
Good. We have a forum, so we can get started whenever we want to.
Okay, let's go ahead and call our meeting to order then. Any public comments this morning? I don't know how many we've got on board. Do you have any idea how many are on board right now?
You're muted, Brian.
It's only Thursday. We have 10 on board, but everyone here is advisory board members or speakers.
Okay, very good. Let's go ahead. I don't think we're going to have any public comments unless somebody has some. And since I don't hear anything, we'll go on to the meeting minutes. Please take a look at those minutes from our month of May. And let's see if we can approve those. Are there any additions or corrections to be notated? If there are no additions or corrections, may I have a motion to go ahead and approve the minutes?
I move to approve minutes.
I'll second that.
The minutes have been approved, first and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. I think we have unmuted people here. Okay. Minutes approved as presented. Thank you. We have a couple of people coming this morning or that are here. I hope they're here already. Chief Zarros from our Lakewood Police Department is here and our other speaker, I believe, is Tiffany Spear from the Community Development Department. And I think that if Chief Zarros is here, we'll go ahead and have him give us some information about what's going on with our Lakewood Police. It gives me a great deal of pleasure to have him join us this morning and fill us in on what's happening in our city of Lakewood. Chief Zarros?
All right. Good morning, Ellie. And thank you, everyone. Here, just talk briefly about what's going on in Lakewood and the police department and be happy to answer any questions afterwards as well and about anything related to the police that you might have. So first, I have to say that, you know, as far as what's going on with the department and how our relationship is with the community, it's, I'm seeing after this last legislative session and some of the year-long criticism that we've seen, I'm unfortunately starting to see one of the worst things that could happen, happen, and that's officers completely withdrawn and some officers resigning and retiring early. So that is going to be a struggle for a little bit in trying to maintain some level of effective community engagement with officers who feel largely unappreciated and are just trying to figure out what to do next. So and I know that's not cheery news, and I usually like to paint a little bit of a brighter picture, but that's just the environment we're in right now. And it certainly ebbs and flows and will make progress and get better, but right now, that's just where we're at. And it's tough because I know that, and they know, that our council supports them and that our community supports them. But it's just hard for them to be enough to motivate them to go out and really engage when what they see from our state folks and federal folks is a lot of stuff about, you know, how bad they are and how in the wrong they are. So anyway, that's not to start off with a downer, but that's where we're at. And I want to be open and honest with you about how, you know, what's going on with the department. Some of the laws too, as far as how they affect the community, we're still trying to figure out. It is a brand-new session and one of the things that I plan to do in the next few weeks is put out information in one form or another, or as many forms as I can about what the new laws are and how they affect our community and what, you know, the potential and foreseeable impacts will be. And I can tell you that there will be, there are some, there will be some unintended consequences, and there are some laws that, while they might have been well-intentioned, did not make our community safer. And that's unfortunate that there was a lot of emotion-based decisions going on down in Olympia that they just cast aside any professional opinion from law enforcement, and a lot of the laws will not necessarily make our community safer and will change how we do things. But we're not exactly sure what that will look like yet. And that's one of my goals over the next couple of weeks is to really dissect the new laws and put that out to the public and what the laws are. And by public, I mean our people here in Lakewood and our community, just so everybody knows what's out there and what to expect if they call 911. So anyway, that is kind of where we're at. We are still, we're trying to hire folks. That's another, that, you know, I think we say that as, you know, I say that as a police chief that we're always trying to hire, and that's a struggle, but I could, I bet you Ron would have the same, echo the same sentiments that the school district is always trying to hire, and that's a struggle there. Trying to, you know, recruit diversity has been a tough nut to crack for the last few years. We're doing okay, but it's still been tough to figure out. But that's just something that, as the police department, that we're, one of the focuses we have is on trying to hire and recruit diverse candidates. So that is where we're at, and that's kind of our front burner stuff right now. I'd be happy to answer any questions about, like I said, anything going on in the police department, anything going on in the criminal justice world or anything you might have. And I see a little hand poking up from Mary Dodsworth.
Thanks, Chief. I know what a struggle it can be because, you know, you do see a lot around, and our police department is so committed, especially, you know, the officers that are working in our community, and we're very grateful for them. So two things. One, is there anything the community can do working with our partners to provide some kind of support or visual support or campaign support? You know, we do a lot in this community for our military, you know, just to remind folks that we do have amazing officers and we do have great connections and we do have, you know, people doing amazing things. You know, I think most people don't, you know, read the city manager's report and see all the things that these folks are doing out in the field. I mean, they're, you know, they're still working hard every day. So that's the first question. Second question is, could you give a quick summary, like you talked about some of the changes in the laws, but, you know, just like a big, high-level, like what that means? What are some of those big changes? Or you said how things might be different when you call 911?
Sure. First, I'm going to work backwards. I'll do the second question first. So one of them has to do with how and when, it has to do with use of force. And a lot of the frustration for us too is a lot of the discussions were based on false premises and false narratives about what law enforcement actually does. But one of the things that is, we're trying to evaluate is the intent that in the change that we are not allowed to physically detain somebody unless there's probable cause for arrest. Now, that is contrary to what established case law was, where if we had reasonable suspicion and reasonable suspicion and probable cause are two legal thresholds. It's not, they're not just terms. They're actually legal thresholds. And I'll give you an example. So we get dispatched to a report of a burglary where somebody calls and says, this person just broke into my house and assaulted me. Here's their general, and fled. Here's their general description. An officer driving through the area sees somebody matching that general description would mean reasonable, you know, is that reasonable suspicion that they were involved or worth stopping and talking to and detaining? That would be the threshold for reasonable suspicion. Probable cause means you have more likely than not that they were the ones in the house and committed the crime. We are no longer, would no longer be allowed to detain that person on reasonable suspicion. We would have to know, we would have to watch that person walk away if they did not want to voluntarily stop. We would have to watch that person walk away. And, you know, hopefully we can find them later if we did establish probable cause by talking to the victim. So that's one of the, I want to say nuanced change, but that's pretty big for us. And it really, it overrides a lot of years of established case law that dictated when and we could stop and detain people. And that's not to say that it would always require a use of force. It's just a physical detention. If we had reasonable suspicion to believe somebody was involved and we needed to find, you know, look into it further, we could physically detain them. Even if they said, no, I don't want to, we would still have the authority to physically detain them, and we can't do that anymore. So we'll we'll have a lot of victims who might call and in that very scenario, and we would have to let that person walk away because if they didn't want to voluntarily stop and talk to us. So that's one change. One other that just came out was the has to do with driving with a suspended license and some of the financial impacts of that. The state got rid of, and I'm speaking a little bit off the cuff because this is fairly new to me, but the state had said you can't, that the Department of Licensing will no longer suspend somebody's license for failure to pay fines or for non-moving violations or non-criminal moving violations, which means there's no real, and you'll no longer get a suspended license for that either. So there's all these rules of the road, turn signals and, you know, equipment rules and things like that that we, you know, had enforced in the past, that really now there is no consequence for violating. So for us, that we have to look at whether or not we would actually enforce it. And some of that, I mean, even speeding to a degree could fall into that where, you know, somebody's speeding, we pull them over, give them a ticket. If they don't pay it, there's no consequence for not paying it. So that, if that's the case, and there's no deterrent for deterrent effect for stopping the person and writing the ticket, so why do that at all? And that's kind of the, that's the headspace that some of our officers are in is why bother? And that's problematic, but there's things like that and the use of force that we're trying to work through operationally. There's a whole lot of other stuff too that will affect policing that doesn't really, wouldn't really impact the community. It has more to do with administrative type stuff that we're trying to figure out. Many of you might have heard about the Blake decision, and that's the one involving drugs and the essentially user amount possession of narcotics is no longer illegal. There's a bit more made out of this than I think should have been. First of all, any distribution or dealers are still, that's still illegal. And we still focus on that. But the, again, the false narrative is that we were, you know, arresting all these people for, you know, solely for possession of a small amount of drugs who were actually sick and needed help. So that we were portrayed as arresting people who were for being addicted to drugs or for suffering from substance abuse, which was the furthest thing from the truth. And typically, and I mean, probably 99% of the cases, if not 100% of the cases, the drugs were found on somebody subsequent to an arrest for something else. It was almost always a secondary charge. So we would arrest somebody for shoplifting, for trespass, for DUI, and when we're searching them incident to arrest, in that search, we would find drugs on them, and that would be a secondary charge. So there will still be that primary charge or that first offense that we would be arresting people for. So the, it's not like we're going to be, you know, stopping a bunch of people for drugs and letting them walk away with their drugs with no, you know, with nothing at all, no consequence at all. They would still be, you know, held accountable to whatever degree they would before for the primary offense, again, be it shoplifts, DUI, whatever it might be. We just likely wouldn't charge for the drug offense, or they couldn't be charged with the drug offense. But we would still, it's still an unlawful substance, so we would take it and have it destroyed. So really, there wasn't a whole lot. There was a bit more made of that than I think needed to be. But that wasn't enough for the legislature, so they decided to fix it. And the fix that they came up with was to make it a an infraction. So you write somebody a ticket for it, or you can arrest them for it. No, that wasn't it. It was a misdemeanor. You could arrest them for it, but you had to offer them some sort of treatment resource prior to taking them to jail. And if they accepted the treatment resource, that's where you would take them. Which is fine, except, you know, raise your hand if you know where all the treatment resources are that we can just take people and drop them off at. They're just not there. So what will happen is we will still arrest people for the primary offense. We will just destroy the drugs and not charge them with that, with the drug offense and just deal with it that way. That's just because that's what, you know, from a practical standpoint, that's all that we're really left with. So but again, the state legislature can say they fixed it, but it's not, we're not any better or worse off than before they started. So those are some of the highlights, Mary. And to answer your question about the, like, what you can do as a group or to support our officers, that's hard to say. I mean, the, like I said, they know, they recognize that the people that they work for here in Lakewood support them. They get a lot of positive feedback from their daily interactions with people from our council, from our city manager. The problem is a lot of the, a lot of the, you know, constant condemnation they're seeing is from people outside of Lakewood and that are beyond your control. It's people from our state legislature, from, you know, just the general news media or social media or mainstream media and/or from the national level, federal level as well. And probably the hardest thing that they are trying to cope with is a lot of it's based on these false narratives that are out there about, you know, these and these false assumptions about what police actually do, and it's never accurate, almost never accurate, you know, because it's, somebody might take one emotionally charged incident and, you know, show people that over and over again and say, here, here's what police are doing, when that was one emotionally charged incident, and it's not what police are doing, and it's certainly not, doesn't represent the, you know, what police do as a whole. So that is a tough one, Mary. As much as I would like to be able to say, yeah, just, you know, you know, send our officers a card, you know, vocalize some support, they're getting that already from our groups here in Lakewood. It's our bigger partners at the state and the federal level that are falling down as far as I'm concerned. So that's that. Mary, I see Michelle and Mary both, and Ron, all three with hands up. So, and Ellie. Ellie, you're our host, so I'm going to go with you.
Okay, I've got a couple of questions also. How is the partnership between our police department here and the mental health people that we have in Lakewood? And secondly, what kind of a relationship do we have with our youth, our young people?
Right. Well, I'm glad you asked the first one because that's one of the things I am proud of, and I think it's kind of unsung around here is our our relationship and partnership with the mental health groups that, I've been on the Board of Directors for Greater Lakes for years now, and it's something I'm proud of and I enjoy our partnership. We also, since 2000, early in 2015, we have had a mental health professional on contract from Greater Lakes working out of the police department partnered with an officer to help respond to and manage some of the incidents involving either people in crisis or people with chronic mental illness. And that partnership is still going strong. We're actually going to be adding a second MHP here in the next couple of months. Actually, next month in July, I think. So we, I mean, our partnership there is fantastic. And that is, and I would, you know, point to Western State Hospital as well. You know, we have a great longstanding partnership there. I was really sad to see David Holt retire. I'm happy for him, but he had done a lot of great things there, and we had a really good working relationship and partnership there, and we still do. I'm not sure who their next CEO is going to be, but we've enjoyed a long-term, good working relationship there, and I anticipate that to continue. So we have, we are very well-connected to our mental health system here, and you know, it might be a broken system, but we are as connected as you can be. So, and we are taking, we're using it as best we can to help serve the citizens of Lakewood. So your next question about the youth, that's kind of a tough one. You know, we certainly have a great partnership with the school district, and, you know, I count Ron as a friend, and the the Grant Twiman that's there is worth his weight in gold, and the work that he's done to help facilitate some of the conversations and relationships between the youth and the district and our officers. There's still definitely more work to be done. And, well, you know, the, one of the struggles we have there is we, not from the district, but, you know, there's some groups out there that don't think police belong in the school at all. So, you know, and we're talking about like school resource officers because it contributes to the school, to prison pipeline, and is actually, you know, viewed by some as detrimental to the learning process. So we get that message, but at the same time, we're told, well, we need to engage more with the youth. So we try and balance those conflicting messages and we, you know, work very well with the school district. I think, I personally think, you know, having the police in the school and being around the kids and, you know, I call it police exposure therapy where, you know, you're around the kids more, and the kids get to see officers as people and vice versa. And I think there's much more of a benefit there than any detriment, and I think the school district sees it the same way, and that's the partnership we've had, and there's always more work to be done, but that's kind of where we're at right now.
Well, personally, I feel that having police officers out and about and in view and in our schools is just a part of our education today. I think it's critical.
Right, right.
Ellie, I'm watching the hands, and I know Michelle has to leave in five minutes, so can we do Michelle and then Ron?
Yeah, thanks, Brian. Thank you, Chief. Yeah, I'm Michelle Johnson. I'm the chancellor of Pierce College, and I taught criminal justice for 15 years, and I worked crime prevention for the Sheriff's Department many years ago in Lakewood, so it's great to have you here. I just hope that you will consider Pierce College and make good connections with our criminal justice program. As you're probably aware, we have a longstanding program, and as a college, we have committed to being an anti-racist institution. So we're working very hard in terms of looking at the ways in which we can support the community and particularly in law enforcement. So we have a very diverse student body, and so as you're out thinking about recruitment, I hope that you'll connect with Bobby Foster and Rick Bowe, who are our two faculty members in criminal justice, and and I have a number of former students that serve on the force, and so thank you for the work, but I hope that you'll consider the college as a strong resource for you.
Absolutely. And before COVID wreaked havoc on all of our lives, I actually did go, I met Bobby and went and spoke with one of her classes and actually did a recorded presentation so she could show it to her class last year. So those connections are there. I think now that we're hopefully starting to get back to normal, we can reinvigorate those connections.
Great, thank you. And I do have to leave. I'm sorry. I have a meeting, but it's
That's quite all right.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
Ron, then Mary, then Andy.
Unmuted. There we go. I'm unmuted. Mike, thanks for being here, and I will echo what you said in terms of, to start with, that I consider you a friend as well. Mike and I work on and off the court together, I guess I would say, you know, to give the sports analogy. And so also echoing the partnership that we have with the Lakewood Police Department comes, is strong specifically because of your leadership and the leadership of your team. So we appreciate that. And I've been working with LPD since I've been a principal, started, you know, in the transition. I actually have a plaque in here somewhere where I was on the transition interview teams for, when you transition from into a Lakewood Police Department. So I just would express that I've been able to see greatness, that you don't shy away from anything when there's an issue. You face it head-on with an open heart and an open mind, and we appreciate that. We do continue our partnership, just for the sake of the board. We continue our partnership with SROs. We work to build community, not enforcement necessarily in the buildings, and we always know that there are moments in time when there's enforcement is needed. Things happen, but I would say that my experience with you and your officers is that you try to connect with the kids to prevent, to be proactive. And, you know, we did start some things pre-COVID, as you said, before we got ransacked by COVID, and we'll continue to reach out and extend those opportunities for our youth to connect with officers and officers to connect with our youth. I thought that was probably one of the biggest, the middle school piece especially was probably one of the biggest pieces that we were able to do. We did that in partnership with Lakewood Multicultural Coalition. Just, again, it just becomes this together piece, right? Better together. So as we continue to coalesce together. One more thing and then a quick question. As an FYI, I don't think anybody knows this because I haven't really told anybody yet. It's been internal conversation, but we're going to, for the next couple of years, using some of our federal stimulus dollars, we're going to triple the amount, triple our contract with Greater Lakes Mental Health to where we're going to ask for one person at each secondary site. So from middle school to high school. And so I would just through that, encourage that person and our SROs to be in contact so that, again, we look at the response to our student behaviors, because we are expecting a lot of social reintegration speed bumps, right? Because it's just normal. Kids haven't seen each other. There's going to be some stuff happening. I also would say that the, I appreciate the legislation around SROs because it takes some of the burden off of our SROs to be the person to walk into a classroom and tell a kiddo, hey, you got to come with me. It actually puts it where it belongs, which is on our school administration, to do those things and to use the SRO as a resource, right? Not as an enforcer, but as a resource officer to help support those situations. And I think as we increase our mental health support for our students, that collaboration is only going to support our kids and our youth, and we will continue to build community. We know that a lot of things, COVID, the racial unrest, a lot of things have exacerbated and exposed some things that, you know, we as a society need to address. But we'll continue to build that. My question, Mike, is do you anticipate any of the, any court challenges to any of that legislation, since those were court supported by case law? Do you anticipate any challenges to any of that?
No, because the the state can pass laws that make it more restrictive. They just couldn't make pass laws that would make it less restrictive than what the case law had already said. So They just couldn't make pass laws that would make it less restrictive than what the case law had already said, so there, I I don't anticipate any challenges.
Got you. Well, thanks again, Mike. Um, yeah, partnerships are just that, and again, I appreciate the togetherness. Again, both on the court and off the court.
Absolutely. Thanks, Ron.
Good morning, Chief.
Hi, Mary.
Hi, I just want to say that I am so sorry to hear this, because just when we were getting. The community to understand and and show and in your company showing the community their respect. And treating them like human beings, we get hit with something like this, it's just mis- unfortunate that this has happened. Um, and Ron asked the other ca- uh question that I had was on the court, so. I just want you to know that you know we are there for you, uh, you guys are doing a great job, I am. Heartbreaking, my heart is breaking to know that your people are leaving. And retiring early because of something that's beyond our control, because you guys have done a fantastic job. And the community is responding, so thank you for all you do, and I'm sorry that this is happening, but hopefully that we can work something out, thank you.
Thanks, Mary, we'll get through it, we'll get through it. I think the last little hand is Andy's.
Andy, are you?
Yeah, good to see you. Uh, I was gonna ask you, uh, you gave a report on the legislation, but I wanna know. Tell me on the ground, tell me on the ground, the relationship between the various communities in Lakewood. We have a lot of persons of color, we have a lot of ethnicity, tell us what it's really like out there.
Well, uh, face-to-face communications and relationships are always better than um. You know, what you see uh, you know, on the news or anything else, I mean, we, it um. I received an email, or our front desk received an email, and this will be a good example for you, from um. A guy, a guy that was stopped on a traffic stop. Uh, and he, it was a very, it was a pretty lengthy email saying that I'm, I'm black, I was, you know, stopped uh speeding in Lakewood. Your officer made me feel more comfortable uh during that traffic stop than I'd ever felt before. Um, I, I really do appreciate that, and I share that, sure, shared that with the entire department. Um, and it, that's somebody that took the time to go and, you know, look up our email address and. And, you know, write this out, and somebody that was, you know, stopped for speeding, I don't know if they got a ticket or not, I I'm guessing not, but. Um, that, uh, that's, that means a lot, and I think that that exemplifies the. The one-on-one relationships that our officers have more often than not than anything um, anything negative. Uh, and it's um, that goes on daily. Um, so I think when you ask about what it's like on the ground, that's it. Um, there's, uh, we have great officers who are good people. And are are good at communicating and relating with people, and it's appreciated by the people they come in contact with, regardless of race.
Do we still have the same emphasis on community policing that we did when uh Larry was here and subsequently?
Uh, it's, well, it's, the emphasis is there, the um, it's just a matter of, you know, we don't have the people. Uh, it's not as robust of a um unit as it was when Larry was here. Um, but, but it's still an effective unit, for sure, and there's still the, the um recognition that community. Engagement is important and community policing is important.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions this morning?
Hi, hi, Chief, I'll go ahead and ask a question. Hello, good to see you.
You too.
I, I wanna know about the timeline, what does the timeline look like for some of these changes that you're talking about?
Uh, I think most of them go into effect at the end of July.
Oh, wow, that's early.
Yeah, once the governor signs off on them, they have uh, some are immediate, some um. Uh, I think are ninety days, but the, for most of what I've heard, it's uh, a lot of it's gonna be the end of July.
Okay, okay, that's, that's a quick turnaround for you guys.
It is a very quick turnaround, that's why we, after the session, we usually have to scramble to. To interpret what the uh laws are gonna do to us and uh. In, in quick order, so we can get our officers some clear direction.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
All right.
Any other questions? Well, we appreciate your time this morning, Mike Zorro. It really is refreshing to hear the news that you bring, even though some of the news is not what we like to hear. But there's always hope and um, we know that this community is very supportive of all of you. So we thank you, and we, please pass that on to the men in your department and women in your department.
I will, and I do wanna leave uh everybody on a positive note, remember um, we live in one of the safest times in history. Um, we live in a very good time, it's, you know, we're talking just about the police department, but if you wanted to look at just. Crime in general or public safety, we're, we're in a ve- we're in a good time, I mean, it's socially, we have a lot of stuff to work out, but we'll work that out, but. Uh, in general, we are, we're living in a healthy and safe time, so um, even with the pandemic, but we're coming out of that, so. Just wanna leave you on with a little, something a little positive.
Well, again, many thanks to what you do and what your police officers do as well.
Yep.
Okay, we're going to move on uh with our agenda then, and um. I'm going to introduce Tiffany. Tiffany Spear.
Yes, good morning.
So I'm pleased to have you come and join us as well this morning and to share all of your knowledge and keep us up. Updated and posted as to what's going on with your department.
Thanks, um, I'm actually here to pick your brains, and so first of all, I wanna ask Brian, is this meeting scheduled to end at eight thirty?
Yes.
Yeah. Officially nine, uh, when it's on Zoom, we, we take it to eight thirty, we don't take it all the way to nine, but.
Got it, I'm just trying to gauge how much I need to go into detail about things. So my name is Tiffany Spear, I'm the Long Range and Strategic Planning Manager. Within Lakewood's Community and Economic Development Department, which is a long title. To say that there are a lot of different hats that I'm wearing these days, and one of them is I am the staff lead regarding. The City of Lakewood's American Rescue Plan Act Funding Program. Um, those of you who tracked this last year, there was the CARES Act. That was passed by the federal government in twenty twenty to try to react to um the economic and social service and other needs. That were stemming uh from what COVID nineteen did to the economy, but also did to people. And we are now in twenty twenty-one, where a new act has been passed called the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA. And um, the city is now understanding the amount of money it's going to have uh coming through that program. How much is going to other entities, county, state, or federal entities, what would be addressing some of the issues? That the city tried to do on its own last year. And then also um, looking ahead, how can the dollars be spent to, in a way that best leverages them? For not only um the most effect right now, but what could be a mid or even a long-term benefit? For these funds to have income to Lakewood. So what I'm gonna do is present some facts and figures to you. And then ask you, and this could be you individually and the um entities or organizations you represent. Um, or if the group wants to try to come to consensus and say, this is, these are our thoughts as a group, that I totally leave it up to you. We are seeking your in, your feedback on how the city should spend these dollars. This is part of the community engagement program that the city council has asked that we do. And so I will not only be um with you today, but I'll be reaching out to all of the city's boards and commissions. Over the next couple of months, and then we're also gonna do some additional stakeholder outreach. So you may well see some additional invitations from me over time here to, again. Ask these questions of the community, so the city council feels like it has a full um. Round, well-rounded bunch of feedback that they can use as a basis for the priorities they ultimately set. So with all of that, as a preamble, I'm gonna share my screen and walk you through a little bit of information, and then again, ask your, your opinion. Oops, there we go. So the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, was passed, uh, I wanna say in March, and we're here at the beginning of June, and so a lot has happened since the. The uh act was passed and the president signed it. Uh, what we have found out is that Lakewood is getting almost fourteen million dollars. And they are distributing the dollars in two pieces, so this year, the city qualifies for almost seven million, and then a year from when those dollars are received. The city can ask for its second half. The city has until the end of twenty twenty-four to say, this is how we're going to spend our money. And then the money actually has to be spent uh by twenty twenty-six, the end of the year. So we essentially have a four-and-a-half-year time span where you, the city can identify. How it's gonna spend these funds, and then uh by the end of twenty twenty-six, again, things need to be spent. Um, this is a somewhat complicated slide, but what it is explaining is on the um side of your screen, and I apologize for the sideways font here. Um, all of the state and local funds. Out of this uh act, total about three hundred and sixty-two billion dollars. When that's broken down into how that's distributed to uh the various levels of government. You end up here with metropolitan cities, Lakewood is considered one because it has a population of over fifty thousand. Uh, we are getting a share of this forty-five-plus billion dollars in direct aid, so. The city is able to ask the Department of Treasury directly, this, these are the funds uh that will be divided in half this year and next year for the city to have. There are four general areas that the act says um the city can spend dollars on. So first is the public health emergency. And also negative economic impacts from COVID, so this is where you'll see assistance to households and individuals. Uh, be they loans or grants, um, small businesses and nonprofits. And then impacted industries, so. Particularly hard-hit last year was the entertainment, tourism, and travel and hospitality area, when people were shut down, they obviously weren't going on, on trips. Um, and then the entertainment industry, people weren't um spending money at the movie theater or um doing other sorts of fun things. We had other stuff on our mind. Responding to workers performing essential work. So if um there was a group, or actually, this is one of the things that the city did last year, was um looking at how. Some of the CARES Act funds that came to the city could be spent to help cover the costs that. Um, the police department, the fire department, uh, and other groups such as that, the public safety and the public health folks. Were out uh in the middle of the pandemic doing their jobs, and so this is dealing with um providing um premium pay for those people. Third, the provision of the government services. So one of the things that happened last year was um tax revenue and other sources of revenue dropped for the city as well as other governments. Because of the way people were living and working, and so this is now saying um, government, you are able to take some of these dollars and replenish. Uh, those sources of funds for the years. Twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three. In order to make sure that you have a healthy functioning local government, so you can in turn serve the people who live and work in your community. And then the fourth is necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband infrastructure. And this is um a little bit more complicated to try to explain, but long story short. Looking at, in particular. What are called qualified census tracts or areas that were particularly hard-hit by COVID. These are investments that the government has said would be a good way to spend your, your one-time monies. To deal with water uh systems, sewer systems, or expanding broadband to areas that may not have it now. In March, the city council held a retreat. And one of the things they were talking about was ARPA, uh, and they came up with some policy guidance for anything that happens with the funds. First of all, uh, in the act itself, but also by desire at the city council level is that ARPA. Excuse me, got a little bit of allergies going on, um, is only to be used for one-time costs, meaning where the intent here is not that. Um, ongoing programs or ongoing employee costs, or whatever it is, is where you would spend the money, it's on one-time. Um, kinda biggest bang for your buck dollars. Secondly, that there's time to spend these funds, as I just mentioned, this is a three-to-five-year process, and so the city council really wanted to make sure. That the um community had an opportunity, and the community here is broadly defined, so um. Uh, subject matter experts, professional experts, uh, business owners and representatives, residents themselves, human service providers, nonprofits are all able. To provide their information. To the city council before the city says, this is how we're going to spend the money in detail. And then the last thing is that um every year, the city council sets aside one percent of the general fund. Uh, to be used for human services um programs and expenditures. And the council said, these are also going to be considered general fund dollars. So we wanna be spending one percent of these funds in twenty-two and twenty-three, also for human services expenditures. So again, it's the one-time type of expenditure, but they wanted to dedicate those dollars first and foremost. To where um the community needed it most. What we are doing to help the city council gather that information is, is a community engagement program, and as I said, you guys are first on the list. We're reaching out to stakeholders, partners, and others, which includes you this morning. We are talking on a regular basis with other local governments, so cities and county. Uh, and looking to where we might be able to collaborate and leverage funding with uh regional effort. There's gonna be presentations uh and other outreach at uh coffee with the mayor, hopefully, we're including information in. City Communications, the Connections Magazine, as well as other social media, Facebook and uh websites and other uh such things. There's going to be a quote, open house, it might be something virtual, uh, given the, the world we're still living in, but we're gonna be asking the general public for their ideas as well. And then we'll be looking at things like the farmers markets, which are now going on, and the summer concert series, to be able to provide. Information. And then also seek information back from people who are attending those things. This uh late summer into fall, we're gonna be talking to the city council again, we'll be bringing back the information that are gathered from all of these various. Uh, groups and people, and then they will use that again to decide how they spend the money uh come this fall. So what are things that can be done in response to COVID nineteen? This is a lot of detail, I'm not gonna go into it word-for-word, but. Um, dealing with the health of the community, figuring out how to expand services and structures. Like, for instance, Lhasa is looking to expand its structure, its homeless services, uh, and its homeless shelter. Uh, that's maybe a place where the city would spend some money. But it's also things like improving the ventilation systems in congregate settings, so churches, schools, um. Healthcare facilities, maybe city hall itself. Uh, and then capital investments in facilities as well, so public hospitals or public buildings. Uh, making changes there to, again, make things safe, not only right now, but into the future. Assistance to households, food, rent, and mortgage assistance, counseling and legal aid regarding eviction or the threat of homelessness. Uh, direct cash assistance, other things such as home repairs, weatherization, or even burials, unfortunately, are. Common enough now that that's something that's being mentioned in the act. Uh, internet access, so that goes back to that broadband um idea, and then job training. So if someone was laid off because of COVID last year, and they need to figure out where they're gonna go next with their career. Um, the ability to be able to train them up uh at little or no cost to them. Assistance to small business and nonprofits, so some of this happened last year under the CARES Act, uh, this is. Ideas of, again, loans or grants to businesses, um, either through entities such as the Chamber of Commerce or directly from the city. Um, some of that is just to keep the doors open or to pay employees, but others might be changes similar to those public facilities. Where if a business needs to um restructure its offices or its factory or whatever it is. Um, and also things like making sure that they have COVID vaccination or testing materials over time. And then technical assistance or counseling for businesses as well. Government services, what could the city be using the funds for? There's quite a list here, but um some. Infrastructure, so maybe improving a road or something in an area that's been particularly hardest yet. Uh, modernizing cybersecurity, health services, uh, school or educational. Modernizing cybersecurity, health services, school or educational services. Is there a partnership that could be with the public school district or colleges or universities within the city? And then other public safety services. One of the things the city did last year was provide support to West Pierce Fire and Rescue, since they were so constantly exposed to COVID. We helped bring their facilities up to speed with bipolar ultraviolet. I will say disinfecting, but cleaning of the air in their own buildings so that when people came back from the field, they weren't constantly having to go into quarantine in order to avoid maybe infecting other people. So necessary investments in water, sewer, or broadband, and I mentioned this before, is kind of complicated to explain. But this is one where there's a wide variety of things that can be done for a water system, the sewer system, or broadband expansion. And so there are things that the city is looking at doing here that might qualify. We're not sure exactly how the city may be able to use this, but it is an option for, for jurisdictions across the country. But where I wanted to maybe get some of your feedback, anything you can say, of course. But where we're maybe looking for some more detailed comment is where ARPA can be used to serve, quote, hardest-hit communities. These are low-income, socially vulnerable people with economic inequities historically, or health inequities historically. Populations and households in certain parts of the city qualify as a hardest-hit community, and I'll explain that in a moment. But the services that could be provided here are health and social determinants of health or things like you live next to a highway, you may have some issues with breathing and, and your health because of the output from the vehicles that are on that highway all the time. Or if you lived in Federal Way next to the airport, for instance, or Sea Tech next to the airport, you may experience that as well. Investments in housing in neighborhoods. So again, homeless services, homeless avoidance, I'll call it. Developing affordable housing, providing vouchers, et cetera. Educational disparities, newer expanded early learning services, providing sources to high-poverty school districts, and then promoting healthy childhood environments. Newer expanded high-quality childcare, maybe visiting programs for families with young children. So again, all of these things can be particularly targeted to those hardest-hit communities. And Lakewood has, quote, four qualified census tracts is what they're called by the Housing and Urban Development Department at the federal level. And these are down here in Tillicum and then across the highway in Woodbrook, in the Springbrook area, north of I-5 in Lakeview, and then to the northeast area of the city, Montevista. So within these areas, expenditures on the things that I was just mentioning are going to be presumed eligible for ARPA dollars. So if there's ideas germinating in your mind perhaps about how the city should spend some money, these are some areas that have some additional support through ARPA possible. But certainly, things could be happening anywhere in the city with these funds. Just a note, the CARES Act last year was really kind of an emergency turnaround to deal with the problems at the moment. Now that there's been a little more time for the federal government to figure out how it might spend dollars. They already have allocated through ARPA billions of dollars for homeowner, renter, and homeless people with rental assistance, mortgage and utility assistance, and also counseling and those types of things. And with the home program at the federal level, there's also been five billion allocated for shelter capacity, short-term assistance. And so whereas last year, there was a lot of concentration by Lakewood on rental and mortgage assistance, just know that that is now being handled much better at the federal and at the state level than it had been. So there may be opportunity for Lakewood to spend the ARPA funds in a different way. Pierce County has also allocated originally at a really quick turnaround, some of its funds as well. And just very quickly, there's money going to food banks, to youth diversion and summer programs, financial coast coaching, excuse me, domestic violence services, comprehensive life resource and homeless services, graduate Tacoma. So things that the city may have spent money on last year now again are being picked up potentially by other entities. Some additional ways that Pierce County is spending ARPA, helping with business assistance, grants and events where there's outreach to help support businesses, summer job programs and workforce development as well. Community collaboration, which is another group that Brian Humphries' lead staff for, has been reaching out to the people that they represent and bringing information back to Brian and the city over the last year. And long story short, Brian can certainly correct me if I get this wrong, but what community collaboration has reported is that the human services funding strategies that the council ultimately approves are correct. And they also support looking at workforce development and youth mental health. The youth, of course, have been really hard hit through COVID because the world has just been turned upside down, being pulled away from the usual school experience and that socialization, as well as what's going on with their parents. But community services as, and Brian in particular, has been working with the community on these issues for a long time. And so that is going to be leveraged and provided to the city council as well as part of recommendations about how to spend these funds. Very quickly, the city council came up with some initial ideas. Please don't limit yourself to thinking about these if there's something you feel the money should be spent on. But expanding human services, mental health, drug and alcohol dependency, and financial counseling services, youth employment coming up with a summer program. I know Mary Dodsworth is actually working on this right now for this summer in Lakewood. Continuing some rental and mortgage assistance, serving the businesses in ways such as training them to access all of those federal and state and county resources that are out there. So being kind of a first step in their navigation of how to take advantage of the ARPA funds. Helping with the Veteran Homeless Resource Center that's being talked about for this area that would serve Pierce County, supporting Lhasa, maintaining existing affordable housing. So working with agencies such as Habitat for Humanity, Rebuilding Together South Town, and also expanding perhaps the current program that the city has for senior or low-income housing improvements, such as installation of roofs or ramps or other things at cities. And then some improvements at city hall that goes back to that idea of making those buildings safe for use over time. Because as sad as it is to say, COVID's going to be back, it's not a one-time thing. So we have to be ready for that in future cycles. So here we come to the meat of it. After all of that, we're looking for what you think ARPA funds should be spent on. And again, I, I put these three areas on, but what we're hoping is kind of a popcorn, what sticks to the wall kind of discussion, free form, what you think where the greatest needs are, where these funds can and should be spent. So I'm going to stop sharing. So Brian or, or the chair can take you through this discussion. And by all means, it's, you know, asking you off the cuff right now. But if there's thoughts that you may have as we leave this meeting and something pops in your mind, please feel free to reach out to Brian or to me at the city. We're happy to take any of that information whenever it might come to you. So again, I'll stop sharing and leave it back to you.
Tiffany, you gave us a huge apple to chew on.
I know. And I did it very quickly. So please, if there's questions or clarification you need, let me know.
I think I'll let Brian go ahead and facilitate this since he's been working on it already.
Well, I'm just, I'm going to show you one slide from, so I facilitated this conversation with the Community Services Advisory Board a couple of weeks ago. And basically said what Tiffany just said, that, you know, none of that information is new to us. We have been having this conversation with the community for two years. We know what the needs are. We know the existing needs have been exacerbated. It's not a bunch of new needs. So let's double down and continue to invest in the work that we were already building momentum for. So this slide is kind of the visualization that we used with Community Services Advisory Board to facilitate this discussion and basically said, hey, over, these are kind of the two major components other than the community collaboration of human services. Over here, we have the human services funding, which has these five funding areas. And then based on the community engagement we've been doing and trying to figure out where the gaps are for children, youth, and families to thrive, we know the biggest gaps are family-focused workforce development, which is our contribution to the affordable housing homelessness prevention problem, and then youth mental health. So that's why these are the Lakewood Promise Strategic Initiatives. So Community Services Advisory Board is actually going to make a, like preemptively make a recommendation to council next week and say, hey, to the degree, you know, a lot of money is going to be flying around, but to the degree that you want to put one percent towards the human services, adding it to the human services funding, we strongly recommend that you invest that in the Lakewood Promise Strategic Initiative. And then Community Services Advisory Board with this advisory board would take some time to kind of catalog what the options are for councilors to consider. But we already have initiatives that we're doing, right? So we have this workforce development partnership of Lakewood Promise Partners doing these, right now doing this career employment fairs. I would love to, and I had for a while hoped to find funding to get a workforce development partner to take this kind of off of my plate and grow it. And so that's one area. And then we've had, we've talked about Give Six here quite a bit as kind of the major youth mental health initiative we would like to support. So yeah, that's basically what I recommended. Let's just, let's just keep doing what we're already doing.
Well, that sounds like a good plan. How about comments from the rest of the members on the board? I agree. You know, we have started some really outstanding programs, and I think that we should continue to support them any way we can.
I agree with staying focused so that we don't kind of get off on a tangent that is not sustainable. It's, let's emphasize and sustain the things that we're already looking towards. Obviously, I have a vested interest in youth mental health support. So yeah, I definitely say we stay the course.
Andy, you're unmuted.
I agree. I mean, it's wonderful to see that what we've been doing for the past number of years is forming the basis of a strategic plan going forward. It's just awesome.
Any other comments? Yeah, I think, I think we're I think that we are on a firm ground here with what we have already begun. And like Ron said, let's stay focused and keep going.
Yeah, this community engagement process is going to happen for the next two months. So if we, and things are going to change this summer, right? But, but I think the changes that we're going to see this summer are only going to put more emphasis. Like eventually, when the eviction moratorium ends, we are going to have already, we have to have already been talking about workforce development and our contribution to that problem as that problem gets worse. And then youth mental health, as, as things come back and Ron was talking about, you know, there's going to be a transition period when things do open up. So we're going to have both of our strategic initiatives be emphasized even more as things kind of go back to quote-unquote normal. So yeah, but, but that being said, we have two months to have this process. If, if needs change, if there's a new need, we should be investing in, especially from a promise perspective. Or if something else, maybe one of the other funding priority areas becomes something that is, that is suddenly critical, please let me know and I'll, or, or engage in the rest of the process. Like Tiffany said, you'll see invitations for that and we'll, we'll be representing those things as best we can. But yeah.
And as I said, if there's a light bulb that happens to pop on over your head here just at any time, please feel free to reach out to Brian and he can send along any information or ideas you have or references to other groups that we should be engaging with. As I said, we're going to be reaching out to all of the city's boards and commissions and all of their members. But if there is a, a community organization you feel should provide feedback, please, we'd love to get that contact information from you. Otherwise, I'll say thank you very much for your time. I really appreciate it. And thank you for the work that you guys have obviously been doing for a long time. Please keep doing it. The city council and the city as a whole appreciates and benefits from what you do. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Yes, thank you so much. Okay, I'd like to hear from our youth council if we still have time for that.
I don't think we have any youth with us this morning.
Okay. All right. Maybe we can get a report from them in some other way. Have they had their last council meeting yet?
I am not sure, but I can go, I can go get one for you and send that to the group.
You know, perhaps they can give us a summary of, you know, how things have gone this year and what they have accomplished so that we get an update from them. I want to be sure we keep them in the loop. Do we have any board member updates this morning?
I'm going to go ahead and start because I do have this sneak out. But I did just submit my resignation for the board. It's been a great two and a half years with you all and just recognizing where I'm at and, and what I'm doing. And my term is, is ending in October-ish from my knowledge. But when I tell, to just share and shares of that this is going to be my last meeting. And I've really appreciated all the time with you guys. So.
Well, Leanna, we are wishing you the very best. We have had good times together. We have appreciated your ideas and your thoughts. And we wish you the best in whatever endeavors you take on as you, you know, move ahead. So enjoy the summer and hope we still see you around and about.
Yes, I'll be, I'll be around and still included in Rotary and okay, see, see many of you there, which is so great. And certainly I'm, I'm committed in there. So, so appreciate it and just, yeah. I don't know what else.
Stay in touch.
Appreciate it. So thank you all. Take care. Look forward to hearing more from Lakewood Promise. We're in such a great place. And Brian, you've taken us and just made it so great the past few, few months and years that you've been here. So, so that's awesome.
Well, I also wanted to let everybody know that this is Andy Gurnon's last meeting as well. She has sent her letter of resignation in. And we need to thank Andy and to to remember all the good things that she has been able to accomplish over the many years that she has been a part of this group. She has been one of the most passionate people, one of the most diligent people, one of the most committed people that I have ever worked with. And it's, it's hard to say goodbye, but not goodbye. And I hope that she stays involved as much as she can. And we just owe Andy a great deal of thanks and appreciation for her commitment that she's had for the city of Lakewood and the people living here. Any other comments?
So I wanted to say, Andy, it's nice to see you on here and thank you so much for everything that you have done. And I also wanted to share with everyone that I have not submitted my resignation, but I've been on the board for three years. So you see somebody kind of eavesdropping in the background. This is Megan Dempsey. She is a community member and a colleague here at St. Clair. And she has interest in for me to pass the baton to her to be a representative for St. Clair. So she'll be putting in her application and you'll enjoy getting to know her. She has a great sense of humor. She has children in the community as well, is very involved. So she's looking forward to this opportunity.
Well, thank you, Beth.
You're welcome.
Any other comments from the board this morning?
I just want to say again, thank you to Leanna and also to the person that I consider a matriarch of Lakewood, Andy, who tells it like it is. And I love that about you. And I look forward to ongoing advisement from you. And from the school district's perspective, I'm here until they kick me out. So I'm not resigning. They have to send me packing.
Thank goodness.
You never know, right? You never know. But I'll just repeat a couple of things I said last month around updates from the school district. Really short, we will be having summer programs that will include both academic support, social emotional learning and instruction, as well as enrichment activities. Our goal is to support reintegrating, socially reintegrating our students. And so these will be in-person opportunities for our kiddos. And then when we start in the fall, And then when we start in the fall, we do expect five days a week in-person instruction. We will be within the parameters, safety parameters of the, what the DOH prescribes for COVID at the time, which right now is three feet in the classroom. And we will also provide a virtual option. We're hoping that's not a big group, but we will provide at least for next year, a virtual option for kindergarten through fifth grade, as well as sixth grade through 12th grade. We believe the sixth through 12 will be our, it's an ALE, alternative learning environment. So it'll be Grad Alliance. And we're working with securing a vendor to support the kindergarten through fifth grade instruction. And we believe people want to get back to school and, but there will still be an element of folks that feel like they, they want to, they want to maintain in a virtual world. So we'll provide that at least for one additional year to support us. As everybody said, kind of getting back to normal or our new normal. So that's it from the school district.
Thank you, Ron. Thank you for that. Anyone else? Well, if we don't have any other reports this morning.
I believe Andy, I believe Andy was trying to speak, but she's muted.
Andy?
Well, I certainly want to thank you for all the nice comments. Sorry to leave this group. But I think it's time. My health is not good. Nothing that I've ever done has been done alone. It's all been done with all of you in collaboration. That's why I'm so committed to this work. Try to make it a better community. And I know that with your leadership, that will go forward. I was struck by how well the format that the city is doing with ARPA could be led by what we've done here already going forward. They just give that blueprint to the rest of the community and they've got their work plan. So thank you for all for your dedication. I did get to spend some time at Bev House's house last week. 10 days worth. And that's not fun in COVID, let me tell you. But it was okay. Some great people over there helping, and I would like to commend to you, the new medical director. She's a great believer in collaboration and cooperation with the community. And I think you should make every effort to bring her, bring her in, Doc, Dr. Pascha Paletti, I believe is the way you say it. She's a wonderful person and would be a wonderful addition to the work that's being done here because she came to Lakewood specifically to serve an underserved community, a diverse community. So let's bring her expertise into this mix. Thank you all of you for all your hard work, if I may, I kind of drop by every now and then just to check on you, make sure you haven't gotten off the rails. And with that, I will say goodbye formally.
Andy, this is Mary. Andy, this is Mary Moss. I just want you to know how much we appreciate you. Your work will never be forgotten. We will, we'll never forget you and just know that we love you very much. And anytime you want to drop by, you just drop on by.
Okay, Leanna has already left us. So with those wonderful, kind words from Mary, we'll bring our meeting to a close this morning, unless there is someone else who would like to say a few words. Okay, I think then we'll end with that. And we'll send Andy off with love from all of us and much appreciation from all of us. Thank you, Brian.
Thank you, everyone.